We are live.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Roy Epstein. Whoops. Hold on one second. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Roy Epstein, Chair of the Belmont Select Board, calling our meeting to order on July 17, 2023 at 7:01 PM, joined by Vice Chair Elizabeth Dion.
Good evening.
And Member Mark Pealillo.
Good evening, everyone.
And Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator, and many members of the public in the audience. Let us, you know, I said last time I'm going to dispense with reading through the agenda just because our goal is to finish as expeditiously as possible. So let's begin with community announcements. And there is an ice cream social every Friday in July and August at 1:15 PM. Beat the heat and join us at the Beach Street Center on Friday afternoons for free ice cream and conversations with friends. We'll also have cornhole pickleball and chess if people want to play games. I guess pickleball is in the new pickleball courts?
I believe so.
Where are they?
Yeah, very, very popular, huge success.
Awesome. The socials will begin on Friday, July 7, which was last week, and continue through August. Call the front desk at 617-993-297 now to register so we can make sure that there's enough ice cream for everybody. Is that it?
Yeah, just one more.
One more. Oh, annual appointment process. Anybody who watches these meetings know that we make many committee appointments and we're always looking for more volunteers to serve on committees. There are a lot of committees with vacancies. I'll just run down a partial list. Zoning Board of Appeals, Community Path, Project Committee, Youth Commission, Transportation Advisory Committee, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Implementation Committee, Historic District Commission, Human Rights Commission, Planning Board, Recreation Commission, Shade Tree Commission, sorry, Shade Tree Committee, Council on Aging. There is a wide range of skills, backgrounds, and desire to serve that in some combination make an effective committee member. So if you're at all interested in helping your town and actually having what's for many people a very rewarding experience, please go to the volunteer portal on the town website and volunteer for a committee of interest. We'd be happy to consider you. Okay. All right. Are there any comments from town residents on items not otherwise on the agenda for tonight? It's one person. Yes. Please come to the microphone.
Okay.
And identify yourself and--
Is this the microphone down?
Microphone.
It's on the table. It'll pick her up. Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
Mary Kennedy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3.
Yeah.
I'd like to bring to your attention with the rain that we've had and the growth coming up from the intersection of Mill Street and Concord Ave., it's getting more and more dangerous. The greenery is growing in. The cars and trucks are getting bigger, and sometimes it's difficult to even pull over. I've had my car strafed by the brush and the trees. I've gone back over and cut down some of it. But more importantly, there is a tree in front of 857 Concord Ave. It's been hit some time ago, but it is very close, and it's at the crest of the hill where traffic coming up and traffic coming down. You've got to be able to get over at some point. So I think it's important that somebody take a look at it, whether it's Mr. Marquette or somebody from the town. But I'm very concerned that something unfortunate is going to happen.
So you're saying that vegetation or trees are overgrowing onto the roadway?
Overgrowing into the roadway and the bike paths. So if you get somebody and there's no path, so there's a lot of biking going up and down Concord Ave.
Yeah.
And I think if the town could find a way, given the financial aspects of what's going on, to maintain that probably six to eight feet back, probably at least eight feet on both sides of the road at the crest of the hill in front of the Belmont Hill Club.
Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. You know, with so much rain, things are growing like crazy. But Patrice can make--
Can I add a comment to that? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. I was actually driving on Concord the other day from Alton, and it turns out that our lovely 25 mile per hour sign is completely obscured by overgrowth. So it's a problem all along Concord Avenue. And speed on Winter Street is a problem, but speed on Concord Avenue is also a problem. And I'm afraid that people are going to say, oh, we didn't, we didn't know because we couldn't see the sign. And 25 miles an hour is a very important speed limit in Belmont.
Okay. Next topic, Town Administrator Report, in particular timeline for the fiscal '25 budget, Patrice, is that a typo?
No, '25.
Twenty twenty five.
Yeah, we just moved to '24.
Yep. Twenty four is the gun.
Excuse me. Yes, I lost--
So I wanted to report out to the board that we had an internal meeting last week. We had the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Chair of the Select Board, Chair of the School Committee, the new superintendent, and some of the finance team, and the town moderator looking at a timeline from now till the end of the year. The town is looking to, we have a successful override in the spring of 2024. So it's really crucial that a lot of the work on the budget is done by the end of the, end of this calendar year. We've talked about having two budgets, one with an override and one without. We talked about public participation. We talked about budget summits that we had last year. So it was really an opportunity to kind of have some brainstorming and some ideas of how to really put together, how we are going to inform the public, what we're going to need deliverables from the school and the town. What we landed on after that meeting was that my finance team and I were going to work on a real timeline, setting dates on deliverables from now until the end of the year. We also talked about the kickoff of the FY '25 budget and the talk about the override. We're going to have a public meeting, not just a meeting of the joint boards and committees, but a public meeting in September to start talking about the needs of the town, the fiscal constraints, the budget deficit, really kind of start to explain to the community what the deficit is, why we're looking for an override, and hopefully have back and forth questions and some participation from the public. Everyone would be invited. We specifically looked to invite town meeting members and obviously the boards and committees, finance, capital.
That's a really good idea.
Yes.
That's a really good idea. But what do we, if you mind, what are we going to say at that meeting in September? Just--
So we, we looked at the warrant committee presentation back last year. And it was really an explanation of how we got here and what we need, some preliminary projections of where we see the deficit, explaining to the public what the deficit is, how we got here, the crucial needs of the town, and what really the, a rollover budget, if you just took the budget now and just rolled it over--
What the gap's going to be.
What the gap's going to be.
And there will be a gap, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an education. It's the start of the education.
I really liked that idea getting it played initially. And I suppose, should we, if I might, in terms of a non-override budget, which would be that, right? With no initial ads presumably, and, or maybe there is, and then an override budget. But how do you get to an override budget until we sort of work through the process of what the requests are? Does that make sense?
So--
And this is a challenge, and we have to go through this.
So free cash is a huge piece to this. And given some of the work that we need to do on the revenue side of free cash, the Treasurer's Office is working diligently to get it done, but we don't think we're going to have free cash certified until late October.
Okay.
I do think that what we informed, what we talked about at the committee at that meeting was we would have two numbers. We would have a revenue number for an override, what was, what would be available, and then a revenue number for no override. And those budgets would be built around those numbers for the town and the school. That's what we talked about.
And we thought just as a conceptual framework, the roll-forward budget would be a budget that basically preserved existing headcount. If there were no override, part of the discussion would be to explain what budget gap arises from that. And then that translates in really into some service cuts, but mostly headcount reductions because most of the town's expenses are headcount.
At least our discretionary expenses. I think people need to remember there are things that are non-discretionary, such as the pension payment that we have to make every year. So there, there are some expenses baked in that we do not control.
Right. The greatest, the greatest, I would imagine the cuts would be mainly, even predominantly, on headcount. And whether that's on the town side or the school side is something that would be discussed. And then the third possibility is retaining existing headcount, but because we've said on many occasions that there are some critical unmet needs even in the current environment, what would an override look like that also had some very targeted additions in certain departments?
Public Works and--
I may certainly support that, particularly in the municipal side.
Yeah.
Now, I guess the question of an override, I don't know how we, you should, you can back into it based on requests and needs, or you can say, here's the amount of free cash that we're willing perhaps to use, presumably, presumably we're going to continue to rely on one-time funds. And then here's the level of override that we believe could be successful. Is that something you do talk about?
Well, we--
Was it too early to sort of get--
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we, we have to get there, but especially without a certified free cash number, you can't really come to a conclusion about the size of the override. But what we can do is indicate the necessary budgets to achieve these three scenarios, either rollover headcount, reduce headcount to accommodate a zero override scenario, and then some kind of enhanced headcount. And at least you'd get the revenue implications.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. I know the calculus is going to be at some point, what level of override do we think could have success? Or perhaps you don't get to him till you do some of this, what you just talked about.
Part success also is partly a function of people understanding what, what they gain and what they lose, but what the ramifications are of not having an override.
I guess I would say in terms of what the number ends up being, people have asked me about this, and my response has been there's a process that has to play itself out. I don't think any of us are making a final decision on the number the Select Board will recommend until we've received all the information, and this is going to take time. So I think none of us are committing ourselves to anything, and that's not being squirrely or cagey or trying to avoid the issue. It's that we're waiting to get the information. We need to make a good decision.
Yeah, I think that's right. Does he intend to try to reach some kind of conclusion on this, that you say by the end of the year?
By the end of the year. That's my goal.
So that we can socialize the need--
That's right.
Yeah.
More robustly in the beginning months of '24.
Well, and then we got a drop dead date of February 26, that's the lead.
Yes, that's the last date, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, I'd also just like to remind the viewing public that when we met the new Treasurer on June 26, I, you said we won't get free cash till the end of October. I called it then. There were lapses or irregularities, or whatever you want to call them, in accounting in the Treasurer's Office. And the new Treasurer is, is doing her best, but it's going to take some time to get the bottom of this. And I know this because as a member of the Warrant Committee, we did not receive information. We typically would have received last year. So I'm just, it's back. I'm putting it out there. This is not any failing of anyone in the current administration.
I think your timeline makes abundant sense.
So just to underscore, we, we do want to move on this as quickly as we can. So we're aiming for this public kind of forum to be sometime in the middle of September, maybe in the third week in September.
Thank you.
You don't want to end up there, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, to get your question.
Okay.
There is one hand of chair--
And what's the chairman?
You want me to?
Take a moment.
Bill Anderson, if you can make it quick, please.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Just listening to, Bill Anderson, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. Just real quickly, wanted to get an idea from Ms. Garvin, how close or comfortable you would be with an approximation of free cash so that we can work through as a town, you know, our estimates before the actual free cash is certified. Is that something that's, are we going to be facing sort of a November, real sort of, having to come up with things in November? Thanks.
Yeah, no, we did talk about that at the meeting. And I think that we, we will have something preliminary. It just won't be certified. And sometimes what that means is as DOR reviews your free cash, you could, you know, get a reduction of what you think you might be getting, or you might be getting more than you think, just with the way that they do their work. So I think that's workable, but we are still trying to close out fiscal year '23. And that is going to take some considerable amount of time on the revenue side.
Yeah, thank you. Clearly, we didn't, we wouldn't ask you to put out a number, a range of numbers that you're not comfortable with, just to make sure that my question is, is clear.
Okay. Our next item is a discussion on possible vote to approve a townwide yard sale.
Oh, so the--
Are we missing--
That's next?
That's on articles.
Oh, Town Meeting Articles.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm having a--
We can do that next if you want.
Having a rough night, sorry. Yeah, discussion on fall Town Meeting Articles.
So this list is the same list that was before you at your last meeting?
So I thought we came to a tentative set of conclusions last time. So what, what has changed?
So I did hear from the Chair, Vision 21, they, there was a revised zoning in your packet. They, looks like they want to focus on restaurants. So that is definitely something I think we can shoot towards for a fall town meeting, working with the consultants, getting it in front of the--
Item number seven here, Patrice.
So item number seven.
Right, well, that's how we left it last week.
What about the signs? I thought that was an easy thing to do.
So let me, let me give you an update on signs, having spoken with a few members of the Planning Board. One in particular told me that she was quite interested in addressing signs. A member of the public did a, did an analysis, and it's actually, the Planning Board actually spends quite a bit of time on, on signage. And in speaking to, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but the Chair of the, the Planning Board, he said, you know, this is the job they signed up for. They'll do the job if they need to. But frankly, it's not the highest and best use of their time, which ought to be planning, not business signs. So if they were to bring the article forward and were to promote it, that might be something we want to consider, just to be responsive to them, their desires, their needs. What they did ask is that if possible, should we end up using a consultant for restaurant language? Would that same consultant be willing to do something with the sign language?
I think they absolutely could. It's just a matter of whether or not we'll have enough time to do both by town meeting.
And, and I think, I think what we can do is at least start the process and then make a decision. But given that I had actually approached one of them saying, hey, I think we're just looking at restaurants. We're not going to deal with signs, not going to deal with hotels. I actually think there are good reasons, I hate to say this, but I think there are good reasons to postpone hotels to the spring. If nothing else, and I think you raised a lot of good points at our last meeting, but we can't afford to have that one fail. And so I think, I think we've got to be very careful in any and all of these. And each one of these is going to require a group behind it to educate and advocate. But just given that I was willing to give on signs, and members of the Planning Board told me that they were interested in seeing what, if anything, we could do, then I think we owe it to them, as a, in perspective, if nothing else, to at least start that process and then make a decision.
I mean, I can reach out to the Chair to see--
I think that's a good idea.
Is this enough of a good start on the business imperative here?
I think, I think signs and restaurants are--
Okay, right, that's right.
And especially if we tell the public that we will work on hotels in the spring, if we have a good faith argument for doing that. I just, I had not realized that there had been, I was, I've learned a lot of Belmont history, and there were some arguments that I thought were ridiculous and specious made against hotels last time, but they will absolutely come up again. And so we need--
Us prepared.
Yeah, so they were, in particular prostitution and drug abuse is what hotels would bring to Belmont, which I find reasonable, but there are certain people who are going to believe that.
Who is--
I'm not going to say--
Not funny, but you know--
It kind of is, though.
Who's suggesting that?
Well, my time.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm leaving it at that.
So, but if the Planning Board wants to take on signs and it's their project, then they're welcome to do it as far as I'm concerned.
But they would have to use a consultant.
They would, well, hopefully this consultant will, you know, subject to this consultant having additional time for this project, then it's fine.
So hotels this spring, specialized energy code is going to be, I think we made that commitment, too.
We made that commitment.
Mr. Chair, I, I know you suggested civil service for the spring, and I, I wonder whether, I know we have a lot to do this fall. I worry about what, how busy the spring could be during the budget season, potential citizen petition. I know you were planning, I agree, some kind of reform in September. I'd like, I think we should try to include civil service, particularly if it's only police in this. Let's see what the feedback might be and the meeting we might have.
Yeah, I mean, look, we have time to decide this, but you know, there are factors to consider with civil service that I'm not sure are widely appreciated. So I think we can take this first forum as an opportunity to explain--
Great.
--to the town, what, everything that goes into this. And then if it seems doable, by November, we can--
Can we get feedback from the Chief of Police--
That's Dr. Jamie today.
Labor Attorney, Labor Council. And I'm just thinking how busy the spring might be. And if we could do this in the fall, that would be a good step forward.
I think having a, a forum after, right after Labor Day to kind of gauge where we are and have Jamie, and we can give a presentation and--
See what the feedback might be, Roy, and then--
Yeah, because it's, it turns out to have some complexities. It's not something that's just decided by a town--
No, I think that's right. It requires--
Requires a bargain.
A bargaining situation with the union, so.
But the town meeting vote is needed.
Yeah.
You need both.
Can they be done asynchronously? Can town meeting approve it prior to agreement with the unions? So I, I think that's an argument for at least moving forward.
So, yeah, let's, yeah. So it's, I mean, we were planning to have this kind of form anyway, so--
Chief and Roy, maybe we have an executive session where you give back to the chief and--
Sure.
But I think you're right. I think we need to have a forum to get the feedback from the community as well, particularly town meeting members.
It's also just become a pressing, I mean, it's a budget issue because of overtime that we're paying, but it's also a public safety issue. We're understaffed.
We got the email from the chief.
Yeah, exactly. He, we, we had three candidates. One of them's not viable ever anyway.
Yep.
The two candidates, that, that's not a good process.
They'll take a good list.
And then number five, I know, Elizabeth, you--
That one, I think we're just on hold for the time being, I think until we've got a little more information. What's, I would, I, I think we're not making a final decision, but I know Mark, your position on it. I think there's still discussions to be had, but I'm not sure that we need to have those tonight.
Yeah, so the warrant won't be posted until mid-September, so there's still work to be done.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, the right, the right--
Are we doing three nights?
I have three scheduled--
Mike's preference was two.
I know, it's two--
Specialized energy code, some of these zoning bylaw changes--
Rome's burning.
--for service for-- Yeah.
If Rome's burning, we're not holding Town Meeting to two nights. Like, I think Town Meeting members know what they signed up for, and I think they care that we address pressing issues. I think that matters a whole lot more than two versus three nights.
I agree with you.
So--
Side three for this.
Yes, I, I think, I think that's the right choice.
Mike's fine with that. I don't know if he's on tonight, but I'm fine with that as well.
Call him.
Those, you know, those Town Meeting members that don't want to skip a night because they're not on certain articles, I guess that's their choice, right?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, we had a lot skip on the most important vote of all, which was the budget. And we, we had, what, 200 out of 288 numbers? That was shocking in my mind, but that's the decision that people made. Number 10, citizens petitions. I do know there's a citizen's petition for a home rule, for us to file a home rule petition asking for Belmont to have an exemption from MGL 61B, which includes a number of uses, but in particular the 75% tax break for the golf course. So I am not driving that, but I know that it's happening. I've certainly been an advocate for it, but I'm not driving--
Can we do that in town without legislative--
No, we, we, it's to file a citizen's petition. I think, I haven't seen the language of it, but I think it would require--
It's a citizen's petition.
I'm sorry, a home petition.
That would be a home rule petition.
Thank you. That's right.
To the legislature.
To the legislature.
That they would have to approve.
That they would have to approve. But it starts the conversation, which is an important conversation to have.
I thought there was a bill pending, where the debt dying--
Uh, not, not for C1B.
I think that's for pilots.
That's for pilot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So that's just an FYI.
That's an idea. Okay.
There is another citizen's petition that I heard about today--
Okay.
--the town clerk as well.
So we are going to need two nights. Maybe four.
I hope not.
We're not doing four.
We're not doing four, okay. All right.
We'll be really, really, really late on the third night.
These are substantive articles, and I support Elizabeth's points on the need to, and Roy's, of course, to conduct substantive business.
Good, thank you.
Right. Next, back to the yard sale.
A much easier and more pleasant topic.
So this is an interesting, who proposed this? Because, you know, we had a time some years ago when yard sales were kind of like a free-for-all, and then--
We did do that, didn't we?
Then they got regulated, but you had to get a permit. And now this is a, a permitless townwide yard--
You didn't get a sign?
So this came to me through Peter, the Library Director, and Brandon Fitz, and Dana Bickelman, not here.
Oh, where's that?
They came and approached me, and I said, well, if you can sell it to the Select Board, then--
Little city there.
Absolutely.
So what's the format, Brandon?
Actually, I'll, I'll let Peter introduce the event, and then I'm here to answer questions if needed.
Good evening. Peter Scherzer, Library Director. Thank you for having us. I, if it's okay with you, I'll just read the brief proposal we wrote up.
Sure.
I'm just giving you an update to your package that I put in front of you. And I brought Brandon to answer all the tough questions.
You're right.
Okay. The Library, Council on Aging and Recreation Department would like to propose a new townwide yard, townwide program to be held annually, beginning at the end of the summer 2023. Many of our neighboring communities offer a townwide yard sale as an event focused on recycling of goods, community fellowship, and highlighting of the local economy and business community. And we feel it's time to bring this to Belmont. On Saturday, September 23, we propose the first annual townwide yard sale. Participants would be allowed to have a yard sale in their yards or driveways between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. A map would be created in both physical and digital forms, sponsored in part by local businesses, and an identifying marker would be placed at each location to more easily identify their homes. Other towns have had success using a balloon or a small neon sign, a flag. Participants can keep the proceeds from their sale or opt to donate them to one of their favorite town departments if they so choose. The, excuse me, excuse me. This event will help residents with home cleanout efforts, keep items out of the Belmont trash process, and offer an opportunity to earn a few dollars. In other communities, this regularly attracts residents from other towns who come to town and enjoy coffee shops, restaurants, and shopping, and would hopefully remind them how wonderful a place Belmont is to frequent. This collaboration has been approved by the Town Administrator, Department of Public Works, both Police Departments and Fire Departments. With that, we come before the Select Board tonight to ask for your permission and approval on the necessary permits. The end.
I love it.
Yeah, I mean, do they have to, so people just, they don't have to sort of ask how yard sale they just have?
Well, we, we would ask you here for a blanket permit for that one.
And so they wouldn't have to pay for the permit, because don't people--
And they wouldn't have to identify themselves as having a yard sale.
They would, actually, that's why I brought you in.
There we go. Yeah, so they, Brandon Fitz, Director of Recreation. So we're going to have a, a program set up on our website. We're proposing a $15 nominal fee just to get on the map, help pay for signage and the markers and some of the services. We probably, we used to speak with Dana about potentially using the, the COA bus to kind of help people transport around to the different location sites. So that fee would cover some of those expenses along with some sponsorships, but they would register with us to become a part of the program. That's essentially pulling a permit is what registering is part of our program.
And we put together a map with all the addresses to give to people that want to go to the yard sale.
So if somebody signed up, would they also give a list of all the stuff they wanted to sell, or--
Hopefully not.
Say that this is an address where stuff will be--
Hopefully not, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think just the address--
Hopefully the latter.
I'm, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure people could, you know, self-promote, you know, on, on Facebook groups and stuff, saying, hey, we're going to have a lot of great stuff here. We're participating. But formally through us, they're just going to get their address on a map, and then we'll promote the map, you know, on various resources and everything. And hopefully get a lot of draw for it. We did something similar when I, when I worked in, in the community of Wellesley, and it was really successful.
If people sign up today, what do they have to, can you just ask for this?
They come through our office.
And would they just say we don't have yard sale?
Yeah, we, we haven't, I haven't seen one since I've been here.
Yeah.
You haven't seen one?
Nope. Maybe when I first got here.
They're, they're very few. You have to get a permit.
You have to get a permit.
But within that permit, what do they have to ask for?
I'd have to look at that. It's been so long since--
There's no liability, insurance issues, or anything like that?
Nope. It's private property.
A lot of people take use of, like, there's a couple of, like, free recycling groups on, on Facebook and, and everything, so--
Great idea.
They love advantage of this, but--
The other thing is that the three departments came together to work on something and really The other thing is that the three departments came together to work on something and really put a lot of effort and time into it.
Is police supplying with this?
Yeah, I think there was an.
Those are the first people we spoke to, please.
Of minor note, it looks like the library will be having a book sale on that same exact day. Look at that. Just a footnote.
So everybody get their book donations.
It means I'm shamelessly promoting the library book sale, also a plan to be held on.
But Peter, do you know, is that Friends of the Library who conducts the annual book?
It is, yeah.
Do you remember or know off the top of your head what the deadline is that they want donations by? I mean, I'm a regular.
Like, two weeks before that, so.
You what?
Like, two weeks before the book sale usually, so beginning of September.
Okay, so you might want.
Exceptions can be made, though.
Just to, just to let people know when they should get their donations in.
Any day, any hour that we're open.
Uh, yeah, I, the doors open, it's in the back hallway, you can walk right in with your bags.
This is in the category of, you know, we should try anything once at least, so let's.
Try it out.
Okay, cool.
See how we go.
So I move to approve the request for townwide wide, townwide yard sale on September 23rd, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with a rain day on September 30th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Hi.
Great idea.
All right, so we'll see you then.
Brandon, go meet Farm Top.
Promote, promote. Is that any longer? It's a wonderful fellowship idea. I love it, right?
Peter's going to say the next, if you all head out. It's a sense of you guys.
Right, our next item, four minutes early, I'm Ida, is this discussion of possible vote to approve memorandum, memorandum of agreement on possible temporary use of the Everent Library. Which, who is joining us for this?
So Kathy is here, Peter is here, Elizabeth Gibson is also here.
Elizabeth, why don't you come up to them? So. The idea here is to use the current Benton Library, which is run by a foundation or volunteers at least, leasing that building from the town. As I understand it, that lease ended in December of 2022, so the use of that building is now kind of, it's available. And the library has, the Belmont Public Library has asked to use the Benton Library as a children's room for the duration of the construction of the new building. And the MOA just spells that out. I, you know, we can just talk for a moment about the MOA. I just had one real detail to ask, is that under the, the lease that ended in December, the is it a, is it a foundation, Elizabeth, that runs?
Friends of Benton.
Friends of Benton.
President 501(c)(3) organization.
Who, where?
We raise money to support the building, we pay for services, we pay for utilities, we pay for books. We organize a volunteer staff to keep the library open. It's run entirely by volunteers. We have paid for improvements to the building. I have a list I could.
Well, my question was, so, so the MOA was specific on things like raking leaves and shoveling snow, but during the duration of the lease, what happens to everyday maintenance? And also, there was a major repair that was.
So the MOA, the draft that's in your packet, referred to the license that was signed back in 2010.
2010, when I first went on board.
So now that it's, it's back to just being a town building, there's no leasing of anything. The facilities will, the DPW will maintain and keep it up while it's being used by the library.
Okay, and the expectation then is, when the new library is complete, that a new lease will be executed?
Yeah, so what I, what I want, I didn't, so given that we're talking two years from now, what the current MOU does really is, is saying that at the, when, after the Belmont Public Library vacates the Benton, it'll then go back before the board to do another final MOA.
Couple of questions. Elizabeth, first of all, so nice to meet you in person. I think we've only been on Zoom. Elizabeth and I had a number of discussions on the, when the chimney fell down last year in my role as the CPC chair. Why is the status of that? And I know there have been issues with trying to find contractors and bids.
The status of the chimney?
Yes, and I just, and the study, the envelope study.
I just met with David Blaisen today to talk about a variety of things, and he tells me they have agreed with, on a contractor who is now lined up to do the reconstruction. Probably it will happen sometime this summer. And now that that has been nailed down, once all the pieces are together, and we also there may not be enough money to do the roof, so we have to figure out how to make the roof happen also. But at some point, Lisa Harrington, who's been consulting on getting the chimney rebuilt, will probably shift into doing the overall study of the building and, and get a sense of, like, come up with a list of more things to do and more projects that we can submit to the CPC. And I told David today that if he wants me to be the person who goes back to the CPC and asks for money again, I'd be happy to spearhead that project and keep advocating for the building.
Does the issue that there, the money that was appropriated by town meeting wasn't enough to do chimneys and the roof? Because I remember we wanted to do it as an integrated package if possible.
I know, so the chimney ended up being more expensive than I, I had taken the bids that we had, and I had doubled them when I asked for money. And included the roof in that figure also, but they, they, once they got in there and really looked under the building, they expanded what I had originally gotten bids for into a somewhat bigger project, which is better overall for the building in the long run.
And this is not, this has happened with us on many projects, so these questions are not at all intended to to claim that you weren't doing your due diligence or didn't do this appropriately.
Thank you. I, I thank you for that.
Can I ask about the timeline? When does this begin? When does it end? And how does the Friends of Benton feel about this?
The chimney or the?
No, that.
Okay, coming back to the item on the table.
Back to this, if you, yeah. Before you get an update on the chimney, but.
So the.
What's the timeline? When does this begin and when does it end?
We had looked at the October, November timeframe of this year, where the library will be moving out and moving into temporary spaces, and it will be for the duration of the construction, which would go to the summer of 2025, could, could be as late as Labor Day of 2025. We have met with, to your question about the Benton Board, we did meet, Peter and I, and Claire, the chair of the building committee, did meet with the Benton Board, and we've talked to them about what their wish list is in terms of keeping programs active, keeping the, the Friends organization in front of, of the public, and, and making sure that we keep it live and keep it active. So we have worked through, I think, the wish list items that they've shared with us, and we would be willing and able to support all of them.
That's good to hear. Are you funny?
But, but by all means, you know, certainly you can speak for, for.
So let me just say, when we first took over the Benton all those years ago, we really believed, our organization really believed, what we were doing was in the best interest of the town of Belmont. To keep that building part of town property, to keep it integrated, to keep it a public space where the use that people could agree to, and the library was the use that people agreed to and felt most comfortable with. I really, we really felt like what we were doing was in the best interest of Belmont. Giving up the program which we have for temporarily is bittersweet because we have a good organization and it works, and it's been rocky the last few years with COVID and with the chimney and with no heat for four months, and and it is bittersweet, but I think it might be in the best interest of Belmont for Belmont to have another hub for library services. So we are very supportive of the public library. We believe in the mission of libraries, and it's going to be just fine. I do think you've invited people from the neighborhood who probably want to weigh in on this conversation, so they'll probably have their own viewpoints, but I think the boards have worked well together to try to figure out, our wish list included things that we thought would make having the library there a better experience for the community, not just for the Friends of Benton organization.
Thank you for that. These are two-year leases, we, we've had two-year extensions on these leases?
We started with two-year, we moved to three, so this is, this was the end of the third year. And, you know, even if it hadn't expired, there was a stipulation in the agreement that the town has the right to use the building, had the right to invite us.
I just, I just want to ensure, at least from my point of view, that this licensing agreement continues. And so to revisit that in two years, I think that's a noble of Friends of Benton to agree to this, because I think you're right, it's in the best interest of Belmont to have a library hub where we can construct this, the old one. But certainly, because we put so much time and effort and debate back in 2010 to ensure that this building is maintained as a library, that we do extend this license agreement two years hence, you know?
So I think that Patrice has tried to build that into the, the draft memorandum of agreement that I got sent. I think the language is maybe a little confusing, but I think the spirit of it is let's figure out how to have a license agreement now that sets us up for moving smoothly two years from now. Am I right?
I think the, the reason it, it just, it was very, it's very difficult because there.
There's no date.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's not a legal agreement because the town owns the building. It's, it's something that's going to happen in the future, and it's so that was just, it's wonky, and I didn't really, the reason why it's a draft in front of you is because I wanted to know what the board, how the board wanted to do this, because I've never done an agreement which pretty much says in two, two-plus years, you're going to have a, an agreement.
I, I want to preface this by saying, I, I think Elizabeth and her board and organization have been a wonderful steward of the building, and I'm really grateful for what they've done. That said, my one concern about the memorandum was, I don't think it's appropriate to tie our hands too tightly, so I actually, my one concern was does this in any way, I don't think it does, but this is my lawyer hat on, lock us into something where we're not prepared to be locked in. And I don't think it does, and I think that's probably appropriate, given that we need to let the process of the new library play itself out. We'll then reach the end of that, that process, and then it may be a time when we simply extend the original license. It may be a time when we have a discussion, but and again, I say this with all appreciation. This is not meant to, to raise a red flag or, or cause anybody heartburn, but I, I do think we need to leave our options open.
Well, I mean, I appreciate that, but from my point of view, I would extend this license perpetuity. I know we're not going to do that, because I think what the Friends of the Benton Library have done has been very noble and added a tremendous sort of community asset to that, that neighborhood, and I hate to see this license, you know, in two years from now not be renewed.
Well, the, the amendment to the license agreement says that the the term of the license which is attached will go into effect once the licensee acknowledges receipt of the vacancy letter, which is at the term, at the end of this construction period. Patrice, which, which of these documents is the attached license, or was it?
They're behind it. It's the one that's dated 2010. That's the, that's the license agreement.
That's the.
That's your initial.
So the idea of the license is simply to renew the term without any changes?
Yeah, it's promising that after the, the library, the lease certificate goes back to the Benton.
Okay.
But not until the selectmen say okay, because it specifically calls out ratification by the select.
And I did that because it gives the board an opportunity to amend anything they want to amend.
I think that's fine.
I had to give this, like, more, because I don't know who's going to be sitting.
I think it's not fair to bind this group two years from now.
Yeah.
Without the knowledge that we'll have two years from now.
I think, I think that's fine. I mean, I guess my point of view would be, yeah, absolutely, we should be bound again, but I may or may not be sitting here two years from now.
Great.
I agree with Elizabeth in that keeping it, that having some sort of open aspect to it is fine, but my, my point of view is that I would renew it today if I needed to.
But again, you've been excellent stewards of the building.
Could we renew it and then just put it on hold for the time it takes?
I'm not willing to do that right now.
See, I'm looking at the 2000 2010 agreement. Where is, it has a termination section.
But then there were multiple extensions that we don't have.
While you're looking at that.
Send it after that date.
So there were two two-year extensions and then two three-year extensions.
I mean, it would, I mean, the, the expectation, I think, is that the Benton would remain a library under the control of the, well, under the administration of the 501(c)(3) as long as they want to do it. So, so I just imagine there would be periodic renewals and leave it at that. I can't see writing in the license in perpetuity, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do that. I just, I'm worried that in two years, this is not, we don't renew it.
Oh, well, why, why wouldn't we?
The only reason we wouldn't is if something came up, and that's the whole point, is we don't know what's going to come up, so we'll know in two years, and my assumption is that we'll extend at that point, but we don't know.
There's 180-day termination provision anyway, something that will be coming. It would be terminated for that, so. Okay, well, Elizabeth or Kathy, is there anything else you want to explain for the use of the building?
No, I think, you know, I think it's great that we'll have the opportunity to use that building. It will, it will give members of the public an opportunity to come to the Benton who maybe haven't seen it. It's a charming building. Kudos to the Friends. I think, Elizabeth, it would be worthwhile just to, to talk about the improvements that the Friends have made to that building. They're significant. There's been a significant investment in the infrastructure to make that building usable, which is why we can use it. But also, just delightful that there has been a neighborhood library. So we would, we, we welcome the opportunity to use it, but I think the public should hear just a high level of listening.
Just in the interest of time, I mean, we accept the fact that the building is in good condition, which is why it's usable for this purpose, but there are a lot of members from the public, I don't know if. I see Judith, if, yes, if you want to come to the microphone and identify yourself and.
Hi, hello.
If you state a concern about this proposed use of the Benton Library.
My name is Raymond Camo, and I'm a member of the Oakley Neighborhood Association, which we started a number of years ago. And I, I have a page that I'd like to read to you that states my own point of view so that the board can understand. And it may work as a point of departure for other people if they have questions. Is that fair to you?
Yeah, how long is your statement?
Only a page, it's very short.
Okay.
It will be read with no, may I pass it out to you?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, by the way, the idea of the two-year commitment, I want to bring up a, a point about that. If the board did make a commitment in two years, that this would return to a library. Then if, I just said, if anything comes up. Well, if anything comes up, the answer is going to be no, in two years, it's going to go back to the Benton Library. You see what I mean? So if anything comes up, the answer is, is going to go back to the Benton Library. But it's not as if it's going to change what the Benton Library is going to do in two years, but I'm going to, but I'm, but that's my point of view on that. But let me read this to you, just as, again, my own perspective.
Okay.
The area around the Benton Library, especially in the Benton Estates, is rather densely populated, with households large around 5,000 or 6,000 square feet. There are also many children in the neighborhood, and virtually all the households have multiple cars. It is an active and close environment. Nevertheless, we were pleased to host the Benton Library. Certain conditions agreed to after multiple meetings in order to retain this historical building in the neighborhood. The situation has worked out well, largely because it was so well-prepared and planned. Now we are being asked to consider creating a temporary children's room in the building for children from the entire town of Belmont. If numbers matter, this promises to be a much larger undertaking. The postcard announcing this meeting seemed to acknowledge this by stating this change may increase the traffic and parking in the area. Finally, most residents, residents in the neighborhood had heard about this meeting on Friday, July 14th, just three days before a meeting that, as the postcard also states, may include a possible vote to make the change a fact. Does this seem precipitous? Some would say so. Based on the above background and facts, here are some questions for the board, and I'd like to read all the questions and then go back to them one by one. Question one, why did the board choose to hold a forum that might include a vote before holding meetings with the residents of the neighborhood? Such meetings would allow them to learn about the plans for children's room and give them the chance to ask questions and make suggestions. This was the procedure for the Benton Library. Question two, has the board considered other public places with available parking for the location of the children? A location with parking is obviously much better than a densely populated neighborhood. Question three, has the board conducted a traffic and parking survey and devised a plan? This would give residents a concrete understanding of the effects on the neighborhood. So this, as I said, is simply my perspective, the way I look at it, with a little bit of history that some of you may not even be aware of. I feel that you should be. I feel that you should be aware of that. So question one, why did the board choose to...
Mr. Camo, let me interrupt you for a second. Your questions actually do speak for themselves and there are other people with their hands raised. So let me hear from other members of the public also and then we can come back to your specific questions.
That's fine.
If we need to, so bear with us. Judith Fineleve has her hand up.
Yep, I'm Judith Fineleve and tonight I wear three hats. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Six. I am a member of the Benton, the Benton Library Board of Directors and I am in a butter. I first became involved with the Benton in 2008 when the late Joanna Hildenberg, the late Virginia Jordan, Bill and Polly Reynolds, Richard Cheek and I met at Joanna's house to raise money so we could pay the main library's librarian and keep the branch open. We raised the money, the branch didn't stay open. And after a lot of work, we were given permission by the select... Well, it was the Board of Selectmen then, to open up as the independent Everett's Benton Library. That was one of Mark Palillo's first important actions as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Am I thrilled that this is happening? Well, no. I am, however, very encouraged by the efforts that the main library is making to work with us and to keep our programs alive. I am not, however, happy about our not being mentioned specifically as returning to the building. And yes, Ms. Deone, you've given me acute indigestion. I think we absolutely... I think it is essential that whatever agreement is signed specifies that the Friends of the Benton Library will come back as soon as the main library has left. Now, I could go on. I've been working on this for some 15 years now. But my neighbors, I'm sure, will and it's, I would like to see support. We don't, I think I should also say, we don't know who will be here in two years, whether of, on the select board. Ms. Deone has, forgive me, made, made it me feel like we're going to be swinging in the wind. And I think we have put a lot into this. We've done a new bathroom. We've done, we've put in new, a new heating and air conditioning system. We've kept the building up and we need to be guaranteed that we will return. Thank you.
Okay. You know, as I read the MOA, that commitment is there. It says that the terms of the license go into effect once the licensee acknowledges receipt of the vacancy letter. So I think that the provisions are already there for the Everett Benton Library to resume functions the way it's doing now.
And let me be very clear, I'm not saying that, my assumption is that this is the use to which people agreed and it's the use that the town wants. I'm just not willing to make it tighter than it already is because I do think the town needs at least some flexibility. I, my job is to represent the entire town, not just one segment of it. So I don't foresee circumstances that would cause that to change, but it's my duty as a public servant to at least consider that possibility.
There's another member of the public, Brooke Heron. Get you next.
Hi there, this is Brooke Heron. I live at 20 Pueblo Gardens Road, right around the corner from the Benton Library. My neighbor of Ray's who just spoke. And the Benton Library is a lovely asset to our, our neighborhood. So I'm very supportive of it. So completely separate comment, though, I do want to second all of Ray's concerns and questions due to traffic. How often will children's events be held here at the library, proposed at the library? And I'm also interested to know, as Ray mentioned, have other public buildings owned by Belmont been considered, such as the senior center that has, you know, a brand, you know, fairly new facility and parking? So thank you.
Actually, can I ask maybe a slightly, a variant of that question is, how are the hours of the children's library under the Belmont Public Library management compared to what's done now?
Again, what's the plan, Ashley?
Yeah.
What is the plan?
Peter Struzero, Director of the Belmont Public Library. So the plan is to, is to limit the amount of children's hours slightly to what it is now, but it would exceed the hours that the, the Benton's open. So I think we would be open from 9:00 AM till 7:30 PM during the week, Monday through Thursday. Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM and Saturday mornings from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Basically...
We'd fall in, well, we'd fall in line with the, the fire code as well. So we have very popular children's programs now that well exceed the limitations of the Benton, but we would fall within what's allowed at the Benton. So I think it's, I think it's 50 people at a given time. So we'd modify the way that we do children's programs to make sure that we didn't exceed that.
And Elizabeth, what are your hours now?
We're open about 16 hours a week. We're Tuesday, 10 to 12. Wednesday and Thursday, 2 to 7. Friday, 10 to 12. And Saturday, we're open from 2 to 5.
We were also going to close the building daily from 12 to 1 for lunch because there's not a...
How many hours is, what you just stated, how many hours is that? I couldn't quite do the math.
I mean, it's... Math, true.
10 hours a day for four days, that's 40, right?
Yeah.
And then how many hours on Friday?
9 to 5 and 9 to 1 on Saturday.
Eight, so 48, 9 to what, 9 to 1?
Yeah.
So over 50, well over 50 hours compared to 16. So that's triple.
Yep, and, and to speak to a question that was asked online to, the, I think I could speak to this because the Council on Aging Board has said it all publicly. We will offer library services out of the COA building. So we, we are utilizing all the options available.
You know, I wonder, I mean, not to sort of diminish the services we provide for our children, but clearly we're dealing with a transition period. And I think Mr. Camo and others probably have concerns about the three times the level that currently is, that's occurring there for children's services. And is there any way to sort of cut back on some of that?
So, Peter Struzero, Director of the Public Library. So what we're doing is meeting the bare minimum requirement of the state. So we're open right now.
That's a state requirement?
Ah, yeah, it is. So we're open 66 hours a week to the public right now and we're bringing that down to 90% compliant with the MBLC requirement for open hours. So we're, that, that's why like a 7:30...
The state has a requirement on the number of hours you're available for children's services?
For all services, yes.
Do they have a waiver for that?
I mean, we're not, we, we, we're deconstructing our library. So we had no library, what would we do then?
We wouldn't have no library. We'd have no...
So you wouldn't be, you would...
We'd have no, we'd have no state funding. We'd be exiled from the Minuteman Library Network. Interlibrary loan goes away. Um, yeah, they do have a requirement for the amount of hours that we're opening. To know, there's no waiver for the average requirement.
What would happen if we didn't have this building? I mean, what if we didn't have this building, what would we do?
Well, it was, yeah.
What would happen? I mean, we'd lose, I mean, the state understands that we're deconstructing building into a...
We would lose our...
Suspend it from the Minuteman Library for that period of time?
Pretty quick.
And then we're in transition court.
Pretty quickly, yeah.
One point I won't, so Kathy Cohen, Co-Chair of the Library Trustees and Member of the Building Committee. We also, I think as folks may know, we want to make sure that we serve everyone. So I appreciate the concerns about the hours open, but I do want to make sure that we have evening hours for the public. Many people work, cannot get to the library during the day and that has been something that we have worked to expand children's hours to have evening coverage.
Let me ask Peter one other question, then I want to take the comment from a member of the audience. How many children's room patrons do you have in a typical day?
Oh, you had to ask, I mean, not...
Well, we, we have door counts, but, but that's for the whole building. So it could be that there might be, you know, it, it varies. So could be...
Around a program, which we wouldn't be doing, the level of program we do now, the numbers are much higher. The building-wide count is between 600 and 800 a day. I'd say half or less than that go to the children's room. Spread it over the whole day. So I'm talking about, I don't know, 250 people over 10 hours, you know, 10, 10 to 12 people an hour, something like that, more around programs. But again, like as much as I love the Benton, which I do, and I've been partnering with them since I got here, there are plenty of residents in town that are excited about the library and they're going to say, hey, good luck with the construction. We'll see you in two years. You know, there's like 10 very successful libraries within...
You can't have that number of visitors in this small building. So what do we do about that?
Sorry?
You can't have that number of visitors come to this...
And I won't. We'll keep, we'll keep it, we'll, we'll keep it within the, the minimum requirement or the maximum requirement.
So...
Yep.
You're ballparking something like 250 to 300 visitors a day?
Well, that's what happens now.
Understood, but...
Yeah, and no, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, no.
But if, so this building, maximum occupancy is what?
Right, but now it's spread out over. So if there, if there are 150 people over 10 hours, that's 15 people an hour.
But at any, at any given moment, the building is limited to 50 people?
Right.
Yes.
And we'd monitor it just the way we monitor spaces in the building now.
That's true.
The reality, as much as I would love to say that all of our Belmont patrons are going to stay faithful to us during construction is plenty are going to go to neighboring...
I know.
Yeah.
Sort of mechanically then, so do you, do you have a door count or how?
Yeah.
How do you split people from...
I do and I will, yeah, and we'll monitor. And if we reach capacity, we'll have to wait until people, people leave to let more people in. I don't expect it to happen, to be honest.
I, I...
Maybe around the program, but, yeah.
The first is, so the minimum hours requirements, are we cobbling that together in multiple buildings? What buildings are, are a factor in the overall hours count?
Uh, no, we're not cobbling it together. We're going to have the same hours in all, all places that we offer service.
So I, I guess my question is, that I may not be understanding because you were saying if you didn't have this number of hours in the Benton, then we would be kicked out of library network. But you're saying we'll actually have the same hours in other locations?
We will have adult services at the Beach Street Center. So public facing, so it gets to the math question. So adult services or anything, everything but children's will be at the Beach Street Center.
Okay.
Staff will be housed at Channery.
Okay.
Non-public facing. And then children's programs will be at the Benton.
So, but to be clear, you have to have a certain number of children's hours?
Overall hours.
It's, it's overall, yeah.
But you're not double counting hours? It's, it's the number of hours that are, the adults have a certain number?
Certain number of hours that library services offer.
Okay.
They don't just...
Aren't you doing it at the Beach Street Center? You mean, aren't you picking up hours?
We are offering...
You can't have the two together?
No, it's, we are, we are offering the same hours of service at both.
So you're treating, it's as if the Beach Street Center and the Benton Library were one building subject to the same opening now?
Yes, correct.
So back again, that says to you, you could actually potentially carve back hours at Benton and not be in violation if you've got the Beach Street open?
Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, we have spent an enormous amount of time looking at locations that have, I think to the question that was raised, have parking, have the accessibility that are suitable for services overall to serve the community. And so, again, we want a combination of daytime and evening hours and, and I trust the library staff to have worked through kind of the mechanics of how best to deliver services to our community during the construction.
And we've worked with the state, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners.
I have a second question.
No, well...
My second question, does anybody know, what were the library hours there while it was still part of the main library? Does anybody know when it was open?
I don't, and I, I think that's a fair question.
I think it's a fair question in terms of, of the residents' concerns. You know, what was there before? Are we going back to that or...
There was one librarian who was shared between the two branch libraries. I'm Elizabeth Gibson with the Benton Organization. One librarian was shared between the two branch libraries, the one at Waverly and the one at Benton. And I would guess that it was 20 hours at one library and 20 hours at the other. I would guess she was doing halftime.
She was.
At each library.
So it was a comment over somebody else in the back. Please come to the podium and identify yourselves.
Hello, my name is Mark Caprini. I live on 10 Indian Hill Road and my kids are those kids that ride on the street and learn flight in that area. I just want to say like, I like where the questions were going here recently in terms of figuring out if we actually have to have a children's space open in there. But, I mean, just eyeballing the parking lot as it is, current library and the space around, like, there's no way you can fit 10 cars around there. And with the Benton being open only 16 hours, like, I notice the uptick in traffic. I always notice when the Benton is open because it's more congested. There's just not places to park. And furthermore, as much as we love the Benton and I send my kids over there and watch them run over and get books and come back and that's great, I would imagine most of the people using that library do not drive. It's all walking in the area, the patrons. So hearing all these different factors that go into this decision, I'm hearing all of them going the wrong way. When to the numbers and the possibilities, like, nothing about this plan gives me any confidence this is going to be a good situation as it actually comes into fruition. So I would please encourage this conversation to keep going and find another solution that doesn't require additional traffic to that area. I feel it would be dangerous to the kids that live in the area. It's already dangerous when there's a lot of construction or parking or like you get two crews working on the house and like, it's crazy. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let me just also turn to online, Andy McClurg.
Yes, hello, thank you. Andy McClurg, I live at 81 Oakley Road. That's right next door to the, to the library. I'm also on the board of the Friends of the Benton, but I guess I'm speaking mostly tonight for myself and my wife. I'm, I'm also, by the way, a certified transportation planner and I, I think it's interesting, some of the, the comments have come up here have really hit the nail on the head. And I think this conversation that you've been having over the last 10 minutes really highlights a lot of the issues. First of all, just the, the scale of operations. The current children's room in the main library, if that generates 300 trips a day and, and those folks show up at the Benton, it's a completely different situation. There's no parking. And as, as people have said, it's, it's just in the middle of a, of a quiet residential neighborhood with one-lane streets. And I, I have to say, I, I'm, I'm really in favor of keeping the library services going and I'm not generally overly anxious about these sort of things. But I think the numbers that have been discussed tonight make the issues really clear. And I guess I'd say just from a sort of mitigation standpoint, at the very least, a, I don't know if a study's necessary, but a consideration should be given to putting in a stop where the library is on Oakley. That's a place where, as was said, there are children running across the street all day. It's on the route to the Channery School. And I can very easily imagine an accident at that intersection. I think a stop sign, possibly a four-way stop sign would help there. But even before we get to that point, I, I think you all have to, I, I think, I think you've, you've put your, your finger on the problem that there's just a, this proposal is for an awful lot of activity translated or transferred to a, a very quiet neighborhood that's not really prepared for it.
Okay, can I ask you, I guess Elizabeth, what, what's the square footage of the Benton?
About 1,000 square feet.
And...
Pretty tiny.
What, what, what range of, what, would you transfer[1755.08] the children's collection to Benton or how would it work?
As much as we could. Yeah, we wouldn't be able to bring the entire collection, but as much as we could.
And what types of services would you offer during this period? Is it more than just circulating books?
Small, small programs, reference services, a small version of what we do in the children's room now.
But would there be kind of group activities or?
Smaller, smaller ones. We'd look to have the larger programs offsite. Again, we, we would really want to stay within, we're required to stay within the fire code for that building. And the reality is that that will dissuade the crowds from coming there en masse because lots of people are going to get used to the idea that they come over to the Benton and maybe they can't get in because we're not allowed a certain amount of people there. So larger programs would be held offsite. And again, I think we'd want to stay within that, that number. And I know that when other projects go on in our network, residents go to the neighboring communities to utilize their libraries. I have to believe that that's what will happen here with Watertown, Arlington, Lexington, all in very close proximity, all very nice buildings. Like I meant to mention earlier, I think a lot of people are excited about the project, but plenty of them are going to say, we'll see you in two years, you know? Congratulations on the new project. And they're going to want to go to a regular public library that's not, you know, a makeshift operation in various buildings, so.
Roy, can I make a couple of additional points? I love stop signs. I am all in favor of stop signs. The stop sign at the intersection of Winter and Marsh was literally life-saving. My expectation is that we could consider that, but there's a process that has to happen. The traffic advisory committee would have to look at it. And also, we have to, by state law, we have to do certain studies to find out that there's sufficient traffic to justify a stop sign. My guess is that it probably would. But just, just so people know, I think a stop sign is a great idea, but there is a process that we have to go through. Second, would like to point out, just in response to the initial question that came up tonight, our agenda is always very careful with possible votes. And it may be that this is not a fully baked idea. You know, we had not committed to taking a final vote on this tonight. And so if you go back and look at the slideboard agenda, we're always careful to give ourselves some flexibility. So I don't think that the process was never intended to hoodwink anybody or cut anybody out of the discussion. Another point that I'd like to make is, in my mind, it is non-negotiable that the library stays open and accredited and part of the Minuteman Network. What, what is negotiable? It does sound, I, I trust, you know, Kathy's my, my good friend who I have deep, deep admiration, I'm sure her house has a very rigorous process on this. It does seem like there's still a few things that we have to figure out, including, and this is a question I have, is there any way that you could? I think you're right that given the size and frankly, given the parking issues, I think a lot of people are just not going to come. But is there any way to have a pre-registration so that you don't have people driving in circles around the building before they figure out they can't park and then leaving? That would actually be.
The plan.
That would make your life easier, I think, plus residents' lives easier.
It's the plan for programming.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that's huge. If there's pre-registration, that's going to be a limit right there on your numbers.
My wife, a lifelong children's librarian, does in her building that isn't under construction. So yeah, that would certainly be the plan for programming because we don't want to have 200 people show up for a program that we have 30 seats for, so.
Well, the thing is, I'm not sure you're going to get 30 people there given what I'm hearing on the parking constraints, so.
Carpooling, yeah.
Or walking, or bike walking.
Or walking.
Honestly, I hear the, I mean, look, I think we need to provide.
I'm sorry, can I interject? We are trying so hard to take this seriously. Could the comments and laughter and snickering please stop? This feels very disrespectful to us.
So I, you know, I respect the fact that we have to keep the library open and we need to continue to provide services. But I think there is a adverse impact to this neighborhood. There's no parking there. Beach Street Center has parking. They have parking for adult services. There's no parking in this neighborhood at all. And I think the residents express concerns that are valid. And I don't know what we can do to address them other than to say, hey, we don't have to deliver this library services. What are we going to do? I think we need to concern ourselves with, as members of this board, that this neighborhood is going to be adversely impacted for two-plus years. And full well understand, I have my strong support for continuing to provide library services in the new building as well. So is there anything we can do to cut down on that? The number of visits that will take place here?
Well, let me.
And the hours of operation as well, which are three, over three times what it currently is today. You know, I know that Kathy and Patrice have been discussing this for a long time. And I would imagine that they have considered an awful lot of combinations and locations and everything. And we have not been part of that discussion. That said, I agree with Mark that, and also, living not far from the library, I know something about the situation on the streets there. I mean, a lot of this comes down to also the, to the nature of children's services provided during this construction period. Because suppose the conventional programming just were not offered in Belmont and instead it'd be one, the activities A, B, and C, you'd have to find them in Arlington or Watertown or something for the duration. And suppose, you know, hypothetically, that children's services in Belmont were restricted simply to circulation, where you would come pick up a book, almost like during COVID, you'd come pick up a book and leave, there wouldn't really be any, anything to keep you there at the site. In which case, it would just be a, really a pickup counter, which could be part of COA or even done out of the town auditorium or something like, which would be, you know, a redefinition of what children's services would be during this time.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Peter Struzer, Library Director. Thank you for the suggestion. It's not something that I've ever considered. It's something that we'd have to look into for sure. Like I said, there are, there are state requirements that require you to offer free library services to be part of a consortium. That's not something that I've ever thought of. Or, so we'd have to look into what's possible. But I think you'd get a lot more people at your meetings and a lot more people chiming in on Zoom if we were to go that route. I think that the reason that the, the building project was probably approved is because of the children's program. More than half of the circulation numbers, well, more than half of the program statistics are because of the children's program. So we'd have to take a hard look at what's possible.
Well, that's going to be in the new building, Peter. That's why, that's important.
That's right.
This is not a new building. This is an existing building. And, you know, we're in transition as a community to a better place. And so during that transition period, it can't be perfect. I know it's far from perfect, but you want 90% of the same services delivered. And you're going to take this neighborhood and you're going to disrupt it for two years, without question.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think it's 90% or closer.
Well, there's, there's some other members of the public. If you'd like to comment, please come to the podium and identify yourself.
My name is Denny Rittenstipper. I'm at 24 Essex Road. This is just three houses down from the library. And two years ago, the town paved and put in asphalt curbing around a lot of the houses. And the parking is going to be rather, asphalt is soft, very soft material. And it's going to be totally disrupted with people parking on the curbs, on, on the lawns, whatever. And will you repair all of these asphalt curbings when you're finished with, with the library? Because you know they're going to be a mess.
That has not been discussed, I can tell you that.
That's why I brought it up.
Okay, I, I don't have an answer for you tonight. Is there another comment?
Yeah. Hi, Gretchen McLean. I actually am a member of the Benton Board, but I do not live in the Benton neighborhood. And I just, as much as I'm very sympathetic to the neighborhood parking issues, I think it's a town building, it's a town asset. I'm really excited about the children's room moving in with the idea that more people in town will discover the Benton and that will have a more thriving Friends of the Benton Library community two years from now than we do now because so many more people will have enjoyed and learned about the building and the history and the community. And, you know, we, we don't own our streets. We don't own the parking in front of our houses. I live on School Street, right next to the Wellington, right down from the swimming pool where there is no parking, right up from the high school. And in order to make our community work, sometimes we have to make the sacrifices of, you know, I'm glad that people are, you know, when I go by the pool and there's 200 or 300, 400 people, and maybe on a day like today, there were 600 people at the pool, yes, they're parked in front of my house. And, but I'm glad to see that our resources are being used and that our town is thriving. So I actually am very supportive of this. I read the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding. I understood that it was going to support the Benton Library, you know, moving back in. And I think it'll be a net positive for us. So that's my opinion, my personal. Thank you.
To see you, Gretchen, thank you. Two more people with their hands raised, and then I think we need to move on.
Hello, thank you. I'm Diane Mucie. I live in 9 Omen Old Sex Road, which is right across the street from the Benton. We're 19-years residents. We moved to Belmont just before we had our first child. We've raised two children in Belmont. We have a 16-year-old and a 19-year-old. We were, my family and other neighbors were very much involved in the, I remember your marketing and your support, so I thank you. At the time when there were issues regarding what was going to happen with the Benton Library. At that time, the Board of Selectmen were leaning towards renting it out to a daycare center and letting it be a daycare center. And the community.
One number was, to be honest.
Maybe it was one, but we were nervous, we were nervous that it was going to be two.
Or sold.
Or sold. So we worked very hard, helped with the Friends of Benton to establish the Friends of Benton. I think I was involved in actually drafting the legal documents with respect to the Friends of Benton. Worked together as a community, which is, I think, what Reyes is saying, to come up with what hours make sense, how should this all, how should this all work? My daughter has volunteered at the library. My daughter has gotten tutoring lessons at the library, very supportive of the library. But I have to say that that building is not the right place for two years of the children, a children's library for the town of Belmont. It cannot handle that type of traffic. The roads are not, the neighborhood's not, it's not an appropriate place for, for this from my perspective. And, you know, with all the respect, living on, on School Street, that's not a street where I don't think kids are playing baseball and catch like my kids are doing, like my kids did. We moved to that town, we moved to the street because that's what we wanted to be doing. And the kids are not going to be able to do that. I think it's going to be, it's just a very different environment than what they're, they're currently, you know, using, using the town.
I appreciate the comments. I mean, this is one of these situations where it is obviously not an ideal solution. But the question is, what's the alternative? And that is what's not, I'm not sure we have an alternative. That's what's not clear.
And that's what I was also saying. I mean, I accept that some people up here have been talking long and coming up with, thought about all the other alternatives. The neighborhood learned about this on Friday afternoon. I would like us to be involved. Well, first of all, I'd like to understand, are there other places where, where this could go? I don't know how it was determined that this is the best place to have 60 hours of children's programming. I'd like to, I think, I'm sure there are a number of people in our neighborhood who would like to actually help explore and think about what the best places are. And if it were, that the best place was.
Other than the other places?
The Benton.
We haven't identified any, unless it's leased.
So Kathy, what's a drop dead date for making a decision on the fate of the children's services?
The sooner the better. And so I think by September, we really need to have a plan in place. We need to, you know, we have to do public bid for moving and for moving artifacts. We're targeting to move out of the building in the November timeframe. So we have spent, and just, I'll just cover it. We have looked long and hard at, are there any available places to rent? And to find a place that is ADA compatible, that's on the first floor, that has the space that we need, has, has proven to be elusive. And so.
So what I would suggest, I mean, I, I know that you and Patrice are astonishingly diligent in these things. But let me ask you, given, if we do have a little time, this select board is meeting again on August 7th and then again on the 21st. If, let's say on either, I'm not sure which date, but if the residents of the neighborhood want to confer either with any of the three of us or with Patrice or with Kathy to see if anybody has a better idea.
Yeah.
Take a couple of weeks to do that, but then we'll, we'll have to make a decision. I think that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things I thought of as chair, I mean, I think it is a good place to have the children's services. I was just looking for some kind of concession on the amount of hours that you're suggesting, knowing full well that this accreditation is out there. What I didn't quite follow is, we have the Beach Street Center that's providing adult services. Doesn't that qualify for this percentage that we have to hit? So the fact of the matter is, we're in two locations, even though we're treating it as one building. But if you didn't have the second building, the Benton, you just had adult services at, at, let's say, the Beach Street Center, would we not qualify then under Minuteman?
I'm going to re-explore the regulations.
Yeah, so I mean, Peter, I guess what I'm most, my, my solution perhaps, knowing full well that I think the Benton Library isn't the appropriate place for children's services. I think what I'm, what I'm concerned about, what I'm hearing the neighbors concerned about is the amount of hours. It's significant and it's much more than what is currently there. And I know it will be limited. Is there something you can look at to say from a programmatic perspective? Look, it's not a perfect solution because it's not a new library, which we'll have, which will be beautiful. But during this transition period, yeah, the services that we deliver will be less than what we historically have delivered, but we'll still be delivering them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll explore the regulations.
If you could help with that, that would.
I'd like to.
Agree on this.
I'd like to explore too, what the hours of the Benton Library were when they were part of the Belmont Public Library.
Right.
I didn't, I didn't work yet.
Yeah, I can do that as well.
I wonder if the residents might help me with that too. Because they'll understand best what, what the traffic and what the parking was like then, when it was part of that.
I don't think there's another site. I think Patrice has been incredibly diligent and Kathy on this. I'm not certain there is another site to look at. I mean, I think we've sort of fleshed that out quite a bit. But I'll do, I mean, I think we have. I mean, and I'm pretty with the chair that perhaps there are other considerations. I think from my point of view, the consideration that we need to think about is can we reduce the number of hours as a concession to the neighborhood? And knowing full well that there's still going to be more traffic there and parking without question, but less than perhaps what's on the table tonight.
Could I just offer that, you know, it's all about balance. And this is short-term pain for longer-term gain. And perhaps it would make sense, I don't know, if we could use the Benton and have a meeting with neighbors and bring everybody in and make sure that we're talking proactively about that.
That is a great idea.
All right, so, so let's, we can commit to, you know, kind of get a meeting on the table. We'll tell you everything that we've looked, what we're, and we can see if we can't find a balance here.
Well, I think actually, if you could do that ideally before August 7th, that would be great.
I'm trying to be a beach bum this summer, so it's interfering with my, my activities. But I'll commit to.
You could zoom in. But I, I think that would be very helpful for everybody to decide what's the best thing to do here.
Agreed, agreed.
Thank everybody for the time that they've put into this. Elizabeth, for her care for the building, Peter and Kathy, for your planning, Patrice.
So we plan to make a vote, final vote on this. Sometime in August. This is vindicating Elizabeth's, thank you. Vindicating Elizabeth's explanation that discussion on possible vote is actually an accurate statement. We're not going to vote tonight.
Well, thank you all very much for being open to the Friends of the Benton, continuing to be involved in the building. And, well, Patrice, I'll talk to you about the agreement. We'll figure something out. And I'll be talking to you about the letter for the wish list items. And it is a lovely building for children, but it's a building that everyone enjoys. So thank you all very much for appreciating how special it is.
We didn't sell it, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
13 years ago, followed the Bay fat soon. All right, thank you, Elizabeth. Let us, I assume Kathy and Peter are here for the next item also?
Let us, I assume Kathy and Peter are here for the next item also?
Yes. But Tom, yeah, and Elizabeth.
Thank you.
I think that would be very revealed.
Okay. So our next, gosh, I don't know if we're going to make up half an hour now. Our next agenda item is a discussion on possible vote to allow the Belmont Public Library to use land in front of the Underwood Pool along Concord Avenue for temporary parking. And we're going to be joined by Tom Gessunis, consulting engineer for the town on this project.
Can I just quickly speak for the legal pieces?
Sure, and Patrice has an opening statement.
Do you want to wait till Elizabeth? Do you want to take a break?
No, but people should leave the room.
I love the historical documents in my pocket.
Oh, yeah. Interesting value. Literally, I was having a conversation with someone this afternoon about use of Underwood, so this was incredibly helpful.
It was.
Taking all the documentation I needed to know.
It's great to have that.
We found it in the vault.
And the same thing happened with the Benton Library. I wondered what the terms of the agreement were. So you answered two pressing questions I had today without even asking you, so thank you.
So, Patrice?
Sure. So in regards to the use of the parcel in front of the pool, I can't say when it happened, but back when this was property was given to the town, I believe it goes from School Street all the way down to Concord, and it includes the Underwood Pool. It is held by a deed, and it is very restrictive as how that land is used around-
Excuse me for a second. Sorry, could you have conversations outside the room, because it's picked up on the microphone?
So it, it's very restrictive of how the land is used. For a long time, the, the property in front of the pool has been used, I think, in the winter for skating, because they, they can-
Flood it.
Flood it, and then it freezes. So when the library, Building Committee approached us to use this for, for some of their construction, we ran it through George, and then we happened to find the original file in the vault, and our attorney had already ruled on this back in, I believe, nineteen sixty-two.
It was great.
And it holds up. I ran it by George, so it says it holds up. So the property in front of the pool can be used as the board, the select board deems. So this is, this is really up to you as, as to how you would like to use this property. The Building Committee has requested that they use it for construction purposes, and the OPM, Tom Gessunis, is here to kind of explain what the use will be. Once we get a vote from the board, then we can kind of move on.
Okay. Hi, Tom.
Sorry, I was muted. Good evening, everyone.
So you have a presentation for us?
Yes, thank you. So in, in trying to stay brief, I will jump ahead. The presentation was up, it's just, it's down now, I don't see it.
Yeah, hold on.
Okay. So if you could jump right to slide three, Patrice?
Oh, three?
I want to see the building for a moment.
All right, all right. We've got the building back up. Just let's not forget, you know, the goal at the end of the, or the light, I should say, at the end of the tunnel here, which is, you know, a really beautiful new library building. From a timeframe and timing point of view, we're talking about the construction phase. So we're talking the winter of twenty, yeah, winter of 2024 through the late spring, early summer of 2025 is when the Golden Bowl would be used. You can jump to the next slide, Patrice?
Yeah.
Again, you know, new library, you see the expanded parking lot, next slide. So we'd be looking at using the future parking lot, which is approximately sixteen thousand five hundred square feet, for the lay-down space to construct the new building. Next one, slide six.
That's interesting.
And the Golden Bowl area would be used for the contractor parking, as well as, you know, contractor trailers, if necessary. And there'll be, you know, there definitely will be some trailers, construction trailers that are required in order to build a building until it gets enclosed, but it would be limited to those two activities. Potential, and I use strongly, strongly, strongly use the word potential lay-down area for very limited times. As an example, if there were two tractor trailers of steel that came to the building, we would not want to have the second trailer sitting out on Concord Avenue while they're offloading the first trailer. The potential to use the Golden Bowl would be there for that, but on those very limited bases. It really would be for the contractor parking and the construction trailers. What this does, quite honestly, is keep the contractor vehicles out of the neighborhood. You've all, you know, the neighbors have all gone through the library construction, I mean, excuse me, the high school construction, and there were times when contractor parking spilled out to the neighborhood. We heard that loud and clear, and we're doing everything that we possibly can here to prevent that from happening and keep things on the site. This gives us the opportunity to do that. We would put a gravel base in to what is now the, the, so that's really the end of the presentation, unless people want to leave this up for discussion purposes.
Tom, can I ask you a couple of questions, just based on this picture?
Sure.
In no particular order, if you use the future parking lot as a lay-down area, will, will you need a separate driveway cut while construction is going on, or can you use the existing driveway cut to get to that side?
We would use the existing driveway cut, because that's going to be the future driveway anyhow, so we would use that.
Okay. And then how many, I, I see in your next slide, you had a count of the number of peak contractors in Middleborough. So how many cars? So it was around fifty cars at the peak?
Peak is sixty.
Sixty and a half?
You see that one day, you know, or one period stretch of peak vehicles at sixty.
Okay, and how many cars can you fit on the Golden Bowl?
They would all fit.
Would you have, how much would be left over? I ask because if it could do double duty maybe and help out with rink construction also.
So we're looking at the rink, as you know, and the OPM for that, and we believe that we'll be able to account for the construction vehicles on the rink property as that happens.
Okay. And then last question is, I mean, if you really had a load of steel or some big Class A truck come in, can, can the Golden Bowl really take that weight, or would, would the vehicle never go on the surface itself?
So it would, the answer is yes, the, the Golden Bowl would be able to take that weight because we would put a gravel basin, we need, that's where I was going. We need to put a stone basin and then gravel on top of it in order to just alleviate the, the mud, quite honestly, that happens there today. So that would be a much better and more free-draining area than it is today. And then there's a question as to whether we would restore that all the way back to the, for lack of a better term, I'm sorry, the mud that's there today, because that does allow for that area to be flooded and, you know, skating in the winter to happen. Or would we leave a better base there and make it a more usable recreation space? That is a discussion and decision that would be made in conjunction with the select board long-term, as well as Recreation Department. That's really, that's not a decision that needs to be made until, honestly, the summer of 2025.
Tom, Elizabeth Dion, a couple of questions. My understanding, I think, from when Kathy may have made this presentation, is that if we allow use of the Golden Bowl, that significantly cuts down on construction staging costs, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
I think it's a very important consideration. I also agree, and of course, you know, as we were just discussing, the Benton Library, the neighbors near the high school, middle school, pool, library have borne a huge burden on behalf of the community as a whole, and I think it definitely is fair that we consider ways to minimize the ongoing impact on them. My final question you, or comment you anticipated, which is, the Golden Bowl has frankly struck me as a bit of a problem, including the fact that my father, once not realizing what it was, drove our minivan in there and we had to get it towed out of the mud. My elderly father driving at night.
How did he get down there?
I have no idea how he knows he had to tow him out. And he did not drive our minivan again after that. He's passed away sadly. But my, my question is, or what is what you're putting in there of a quality such that if we, as we do plan, it could stay? I guess if we're going to put stuff in there, I'd like to be thinking about the end from the beginning, so that we don't suddenly have to take away material that if we thought about it differently, could have, had been done differently. I, I just want to streamline and make this as, as economic as possible.
Yes, absolutely. The material that we would put in could stay and could be there long-term, permanently, quite honestly, if that is what's decided. And that was kind of my point, that we need that in order to make it a usable space anyhow. There's, it, it could stay, or it could be removed. It really is a decision for the town on what they want to do as a whole with that space long-term.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the question I have, and this is a legal question, right? Because this is, I guess we haven't, or have we addressed that? I mean, we have this town council opinion by Parks and Hessian back in twenty, nineteen sixty-two, and we have a memo from David Kale, I think, during the time in which we were looking at putting in a soccer field there. Have we clarified, have we clarified whether, under the, the conveyance by the, by Henry Underwood, whether this land, which was deemed to be for park use only, can be used for parking?
Yeah, so I showed this opinion to George, and we had that conversation, because I told George what the Building Committee wanted it to be used for.
Yeah, which makes perfect sense to me.
On a temporary basis, given this opinion, it would be more than reasonable for the board to, to deem it temporary.
Because it says other similar uses, so it doesn't really quite define what that means, right?
That's right.
In this, in this conveyance by the-
But it's just, it's a public use.
It's a public use, supporting-
Yeah, something temporarily going to town.
But it's not public use. Yeah, it's public, but it's not for recreation or park purposes.
I mean, I think, I think anything can be challenged.
No, I understand. I'm just asking the question, just to clarify whether we're planning on doing this.
Yeah, there's some, my conversation with William, showing him this opinion, he thought-
Presumably, and I agree, that it's unlikely to be challenged by the Underwood family as for temporary purposes only, the Golden Bowl, we will go back to being the Golden Bowl.
Well, and in fact, the work that we're doing, we're hoping, will be the groundwork for recreational use for something that's frankly not been used or not cared for.
Just flooded during the winter months.
Yeah, and global warming, I don't know that it's going to freeze again.
Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
The only thing that I would add, and I had sent you a revised motion this afternoon, is there's a, there's a culvert behind the library, and I would like the board to make this contingent on that there being direct access to the culvert behind the library.
All right, so I don't have that motion.
That, that's reasonable.
Tom, is that?
Yeah, here it is. No, no, no.
Tom, how, how would the culvert not be accessible?
So the, the plan for the culvert has always been included, and in fact, the plans for the library enhance the accessibility to the culvert for both fire protection service purposes, getting, you know, and, and emergency services getting to the pool house, as well as DPW getting to the back of even the new library building in order to access the grate that is the start of the culvert. Because as you all know, behind the library, it's the Open Brook, and right at the intersection between the library and the pool property and the bowl property is where it goes underground and then runs underground along the back of the Golden Bowl, front of the, of the pool, cuts across and goes along Concord Avenue, cuts across at approximately Golden Street, and then daylights at the Underwood, at the Clayford Pond.
We just need to be able to get a piece of equipment-
Absolutely.
During the construction.
During the construction. And if, if the Golden Bowl puts up a fence, we just need to make sure that a, a piece of equipment can get back.
A hundred percent, totally agree.
I have no more, it sounds fine. I have no, no more question. I'm, I don't, I'm not concerned about a challenge. Is there a question about this?
Yes, Angus Abercrombie, tell me, do you have a present date? My concern on this is really to do with the number of construction vehicles that are going to be conflicting with an existing bike lane, and just where the entry point is to the Golden Bowl construction, because I know there's an existing emergency vehicle lane, but I'm not sure if that's what will be used.
It's not just construction vehicles, it's also going to be construction worker vehicles. So we're, we're trying to alleviate what's happening on Concord Ave, which is going to be a new middle and high school building of seventh through twelfth grade, of rink construction and the library construction, construction vehicles and construction workers. We are trying to pull as much off Concord Ave as we can to alleviate that pressure.
So, Tom, what's the plan for entry and exit from the Golden Bowl?
It's a fair question.
Yeah, no, we would, we're striving to use the existing entrance that's there for the emergency vehicle, so that we don't have to cut another curb cut into it. These vehicles, remember, we're talking construction workers, so they're not going to be coming and going throughout the course of the day. They'll be coming in the morning, working their day shift, and then leaving at the end of the day. It's not going to be a constant in and out. The lay-down area and the, you know, contractors getting in to the actual construction site would be, Roy, as you described earlier, at the existing entrance to the parking lot.
Have you considered maybe having cars exit on Cottage Street? That way, they would have the option of turning left or right on Concord Avenue.
Yes, that's, that's definitely something that we're looking into, absolutely.
Okay.
As a follow-up, if, if I might, I don't know if anyone here necessarily is interested in this question, but is there any effort right now to ensure that those construction workers are not all happening to arrive at the same time that, you know, hundreds of students are going to the, the new middle high school?
They, they start before seven thirty, don't they, Tom?
Yes, they do. Construction is, construction workday is usually seven AM to three thirty PM.
And we specify that. This is for future consideration, but that whole area probably needs some police presence in the morning.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. I suspect we're just, there's too many conflicts there, Patrice. Yes.
I worry about the amount of construction vehicles, construction workers, the rink, the, the library, and students, and-
And then add the pool in the summer.
Yeah, so, I mean, clearly, we need to provide some kind of police supervision. Want to motion, Mr. Chair? I do. Move to approve the request from the Belmont Public Library to use land in front of the Underwood Pool along Concord Avenue for temporary parking contingent that there would be direct access to the culvert behind the library.
All in favor?
I thank everybody for your work on this and-
Thank you both.
Thank you, Tom. Want to state the-
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
I think you're done. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Kathy.
We would love to have you-
Appreciate you hanging in there, and a great idea, by the way, on the somewhat-
Yeah, thank you for being creative and efficient.
I think you're-
Do you have any other questions for myself, or?
Mr. Gessunis, thank you. No, I think we're done.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Later. All right, so we return to the liquor license. We had questions about-
Actually, entertainment license?
We've got a license to tell them.
Yeah, I should, I should learn to read better. Yeah, entertainment license. I take it there's no representative from Camillus here, but Patrice, I'm curious to know what an, what an entertainment license is.
An entertainment license? I have not seen one since I've been here. This is the, it's similar to other licenses the boards give out. It's statutory in nature. You'll find it in master and law. There is a application process. We, there is no master and law that says you have to notify the abutters, but given that there's never been an entertainment license that I've seen, I figured we would let the director abutters know. It's, it's not a lot of residents that live in that area. I don't know if any are on, but we did, I think, three hundred feet buffer, notified the abutters. This is really the ability for the board to grant the applicant the ability to have, as they're requesting live entertainment, at their site.
It looks like it was just Saturday nights, and it was jazz.
It looks like it's Saturday nights.
What are, what are the hours?
I don't know if you can limit the type of entertainment.
Oh, five thirty, five thirty to nine.
That was informational.
Five thirty to nine.
So, so my feeling is, anything that brings life to this corner of Belmont is a good thing. Anything that helps Camillus succeed is a good thing. That's at a problematic location, I think it's creative, I like it. As far as I know, Camillus has been a good citizen.
Use annual appointments too. You would, you would appoint, you would do this again next year.
Yeah, so, but I guess I think it's very important that we signal the business community that we're grateful, we're trying to facilitate their businesses, not hamper them, and that we welcome these creative ideas that bring life to Belmont.
So, Patrice, what's the fee for a license, and what does somebody actually have to do to comply with the terms of a license?
So in regards to this one, I can't, I don't know the exact cost. Again, I, it's been a while, we've never done one.
I've never done one.
Yeah, I, I think that it's really making sure they don't disrupt the neighborhood, you don't get noise complaints, there aren't any additional issues that are created through the police department, which we'll know as the year goes on. I've done these in other communities, they vary in terms of what is defined as entertainment. Sometimes it's, it could be, you know, electronic games or things like that. I mean, it really depends.
Well, I agree with Elizabeth. Let's see how it goes, and if-
Yeah, I think this is an opportunity.
Any concerns from residents, we'll address it.
You can address it in the next year.
Okay, so this is, this is a partial year, and then we renew it for January one, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So do I put the year in here, or just move to approve it?
Well, it, it, it says it terminates at its own term. Well, it says it terminates at its own time.
So I move to approve a new entertainment license at Camillus Restaurant located at 11 Brighton Street, Belmont, Mass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jazz?
Great.
Who doesn't like jazz? Jazz and pizza, not bad. What time is that? Do you like jazz? No, I don't like jazz.
I don't know what to say.
Oh, I like rock and roll. You gotta like jazz, brother.
So we are, so we're revisiting the liquor license that we voted.
It wasn't all alcohol, was it?
It was wine and beer.
It was wine and beer.
It's corrected, we know it corrected.
All right, want a motion on this, Mr. Chair?
I can, before we, before, can I just, I know, Patrice, I'm not expecting you to have an answer on this, but at some point, just wanna keep some agenda that we look at the cost of alcohol and wine and alcohol.
Yeah, so we did look into it a little bit because I had asked Pam about your question. And some towns, we did the comps of other towns, some towns have higher fees, not huge amount more, but there is, our fee is pretty low.
So I just feel like we need to keep an eye on this because most apartments have to, this does take town time.
Yes.
And there's no way that these fees reflect the cost on the town of the time involved.
That's correct.
And so I think we need to keep our fees in line with the actual cost of the valuable time of town for us.
Yep, I mean, we could look at what I was planning on, well, I think we need to look at the alcohol regulations, rules and regulations that are currently in place anyway.
Yep.
But one of the things I had had Pam is to get a comps of the fees in the general area and then have the board decide where they want that fee to be.
I think that makes abundant sense.
Okay.
Okay.
So I move to approve the request for one-day liquor license, beer and wine only, to be cleared out for jail on July 22, 2023, from the hours of 5:00 to 10:00 PM, at the First Church in Belmont, UU, for a religious ceremony.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just in time, just in nick of time.
Wow.
We already approved the all alcohol, so we don't need to rescind that, right?
Well, no, we didn't, we realized it was a mistake, there was a mistake.
I thought we approved it.
You did it on alcohol.
Okay, okay.
And then we said if it was wrong, come back.
So this is, so we, we.
So we fixed it.
This one, okay, got it. Item seven?
Item seven, so this is a number of committee appointments.
Let me just, just to confirm, Amory Maloney does not want to be on district commission. She gave an either-or submissions. So she said, because I saw her, and so that's why I reached out to her, because when I looked at her application, she said if she wasn't on CPC, then HTC, she does not wobble.
Okay.
So.
Did you want something discussed in the process, Mr. Chair? Is that what, that was on your?
No, that was on there. I'm not, that was.
That was an eulogist from my staff. We had a discussion and they took it as an agenda item.
Ah, okay.
You don't need to organize around this?
I think we.
I would agree that we sort of, I think we get it done, but I think it's just all over the place.
It can be.
Yeah, it's from.
So let us start with Land Management Committee for Lone Tree Hill.
Did you do this already?
We did, there was an error, there was an error.
Oh, there was an error, okay.
So we voted three candidates for only two seats. And this is a situation where the two incumbents are seeking reappointment. And, you know, they're both, I think, qualified and have done a good job. Rada has, is seeking a third term, so I do wanna stand by my general position that after 10 years, somebody should actually make room for somebody else if a qualified new applicant comes along, but she hasn't reached the tenure.
Well, three years is, or three.
Well, Mr. Chair, would that be a policy, just to sort out the discussion on the select board?
Well, it would be a preference, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Is it evidence of preference makes sense, if there's interest? Sometimes on some of these committees, you don't have anyone else.
No, I'm agreeing.
Or we might have applicants.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna suggest that actions here is for reappoint Rada, which we did already, right?
Right, so the motion, the motion's been provided.
Move to reappoint Rada Denga to a three-year term to expire 6/30/26.
To the Land Management Committee.
To the Land, sorry, thank you, Elizabeth, to the Land Management Committee for Lone Tree Hill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to move to reappoint Carl Solander to a two-year term to expire 6/30/2025 to the Land Management Committee for Lone Tree Hill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And thank Greg Waldmeyer for his interest and see if we can find another person.
So ConCon.
Just on cable.
Really? Did I miss it?
Cable.
I apologize.
So cable television is a situation where regardless of how long Jonathan Berg has been there, and I'm not sure how long it's been, he's the only, actually, there's no applicant.
Where is this?
AT.
Oh, okay. I move to reappoint Jonathan Burge for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 to the Cable Television Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Jonathan, thank you for your service.
ConCon's next, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Two incumbents want to be reappointed, which I support, two have expressed interest.
And can I also say, even though Margaret Beely has served over the tenure preference, she is a critical member of the Community Preservation Committee. And she's a member as the liaison from the Conservation Commission. And Peg's got institutional knowledge that nobody has. She's, she's really, really important, so.
Well, I, you know, both members are good, in fact, extremely good. But this is a situation where James Girath has been there, he says for 12 years, and even though he's chair, I do think it's appropriate to create an opportunity for somebody. And after 12 years, I think it's great that they've served that long, but it's also great that somebody new who appears to be qualified and motivated is willing to serve. And I think I would like to create that opportunity.
Can I point out that she also, her first interest was his own Board of Appeals, where we are qualitatively short.
Is this Alexandra Danahue?
Alexandra Danahue.
I'm looking at Jason Elliott, actually.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at.
I think Jim has served real well as chair, and it's really, you can be that background and experience, I'd hate to sort of remove him at this point in time.
Well.
I understand your point, but.
I guess what I think is, I appreciate the point. Before we implement it, I think we need to let current committee members know and generate more applications. So I am not willing to implement it tonight, I'm willing to consider it going forward, but I don't think.
I'm willing to compromise and make it a one-year appointment or a two-year appointment to allow for reconsideration next year. Anticipation to sort of, in consideration of what you just said, Elizabeth, to let committee members know that prospectively, the board, select board is.
Has a preference.
Has a preference to, for committee members not to serve more than 10 years.
But the challenge we're gonna have on the Conservation Commission is given that I'm really, frankly desperate to keep Peg Beely on the community development.
I don't know that she's even, I don't know how long she's been there, frankly, but I was thinking.
Let's reappoint Jim for a year, and then we can, you can consider his reappointment next year, or Jason Elliott.
That's fine, I'm fine. Reappoint Jim for a year and Peg for three years?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, I move to, I move to reappoint Jim Roth, James Roth, for a one-year term to expire 6/30/25 to the Conservation Commission.
Your 24.
Oh, 24, God, oh my, 24, excuse me.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to reappoint Margaret Beely for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I'm wondering, can someone please reach out to Alexander Danahue to?
She, we, she had expressed an interest in the planning board, Elizabeth, right? During that, but she had, but she had, but she had expressed an interest, we met with her, interviewed her.
Okay.
But she had a conflict with Belmont Day School, Belmont Hill School, because I think she had members of her family that were attending, so they didn't appoint her, but I thought she was terrific, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to consider her ZDA, absolutely without question.
She put it down and.
I think it would be great, I support that, I support that, she's terrific.
So is that one where you'll reach out to her, or how do we?
Yeah, I know.
I also think it's appropriate to have the current sheriff, the ZDA, talk to her.
So here we are with the constables.
So I, yeah, I have a question with the constables.
Because it appears that a constable does not have to be a resident of the town. I read the, was it MGL or whatever that governs that?
Mm-hmm. So how do we feel? And there are some committees where I feel very strongly about someone being a resident. We don't, we don't actually make that up for a month in numbers.
So David Benoit and Donna Feely are not residents?
David moved.
No, David's moved.
But I have the highest regard for David, I really do.
Well, it's a fairly specialized skill.
All right, so I move to reappoint David Benoit for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 as a constable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I move to reappoint Donna Feely for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 as a constable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Having said that, I really am gonna look pretty closely at people who are not residents for any other position. I think constables are very specific.
I agree with you in that. I agree, I think that makes abundant sense. ITAC, we just have one applicant?
We appoint.
Actually, no, no new applicant to this.
No, one new, one reappointed applicant.
Yeah.
Did we just reappoint Jonathan Burge?
Cable television.
He's on both? I think that's fine.
Actually, I think that's a useful.
So I move to reappoint Jonathan Burge for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 to the Information Technology Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roy, PAC? Who is this? Are you still the lobbyist? Who's the primary committee now? Is it Elizabeth? What do we sign?
I need to go back, I know I've got.
My law says chair.
But you served last time. You were serving when I was chair.
Yeah, because I think you didn't wanna do it.
Well, I have done it. I'm fine if you wanna continue to do it.
Mark, if you wanna go, I'm happy.
No, no.
Mark certainly has relevant skills.
Yeah, with CPI, but it's up to you, you decide. I forgot how we did this.
All I know is, I'd love to have one of you do it so that I know.
I didn't wanna do it, Roy Cronkier.
I think you had other committees, I think there was a lot of committees.
It was on last night.
Yeah, it was me.
If you wanna continue, you're good, I'm happy.
I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, you do it.
Let us reappoint Bob.
I move, Bob keeps great, so I move to reappoint Robert Key for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 to the Primary Audit Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. For Board of Registrars. So Board of Registrors is an unusual kind of committee because we actually don't pick applicants. The applicants are proposed both by the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town.
Is it Board of Registrors or poll workers?
Board of Registrors.
Board of Registrors.
What about the poll workers?
It's like a hybrid, it goes to the board first and the board does take action, then it goes to the registrar.
Okay.
So Bob McGaw and Stephen Shostakovsky, I assume, were put forward by the Democratic Town Committee and then.
They were, I didn't see anything from the Republican Town Committee.
It's like this.
Did we ask them?
Paul Miners' term is not up yet.
Did we ask them?
No, there's, I read this once, but I've forgotten how it is, who becomes the majority.
I had that same question as well.
I think it's one and one.
I can't remember how the next one.
The committees in town propose, make proposal to the select board.
That's right. Then you have to have one from the Republican.
And the poll workers are how?
The election workers goes to the board first, after we're notified.
But the election workers proposed by the Republican, Democratic Town.
No, they're proposed by, I believe, the Board of Registrors.
I see, okay.
And then if the board doesn't.
What are you doing this?
I think we just reappoint them. Reappoint, although.
I don't, aren't we going to be somewhat deferential to the recommendations of the local parties?
We don't have any discretion, I don't think, but the whole appointment is a little bit archaic because I think a majority of voters now are undeclared, so.
I think in the future, you might have a problem finding one for each.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I think we just proceed to.
All right, I move to reappoint Robert McGaw for a three-year term to expire 6/30/26 to the registrar voters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to reappoint Stephen Shostakovsky for a two-year term. Huh. Is it a two-year term?
We forgot to reappoint, or you forgot to reappoint him last year.
To expire, oh, okay, all right, that's interesting. 6/5/6/3/25 to the registrar voters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
HTC?
HTC, Amory Maloney is not a candidate.
She's not?
No, she just texted me.
So.
Okay, interesting.
And Kamal Mahajan seems actually like a very interesting candidate.
Yeah, I was impressed.
So we, we have.
So we reappoint Drew Nealan, and we're short, we're short a candidate now?
Well, you just, it's an associate, I think, right?
No, we have a full candidate that doesn't want to be.
Yeah, I know, it's not being.